Good evening, everyone. Today is Thursday, May 11th, 2023. We are going to open our board study session for the evening. First thing on the agenda is called to order and our flags. These rise and which disappeared. Ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We will call trustee Trin.
Here.
Trustee Proctor.
Here.
Trustee Brooks.
Here.
And President Watkins will be here shortly, and I am here as well. Next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the agenda.
Second. Thank you, trustee Trin for the motion and trustee Brooks for the second. I believe we can do a verbal since President Watkins is here yet, so all in favor. Next is public statements. A public statement, public statements related to agenda items. Please limit statements to three minutes. Two, we have, there's no one here in the audience in person. Joe, would you mind pulling any Zoom members for any public statements at this time, please?
Yes. Thank you, Vice President Chen. Good evening. I'll be calling on speakers during public comment in random order. For attendees, if you would like to speak, please use the raised hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees that have called in can dial star nine to raise their hand. Speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks. And once time has expired, we will move to the next speaker. Okay, we have one speaker, Marcella Cardozo McCollum. Give me one moment. Okay, Marcela, please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. I just wanted to, I think this is the right time. I just wanted to express my appreciation to the, there are many task forces that have been working all year, and this particular one really had a strong, it really had strong input from a variety of community members, including our students. And I know that that has been a focus recently. I think it really drove some of the suggestions that will be given. And I'm really proud of the district and of the students who participated and felt comfortable enough to share their, their opinions in these spaces. So I want to thank the district. I want to thank the leaders who helped us develop this presentation. Thank you.
Okay, President, Vice President Chen, I don't see any other public comments.
Great, thank you. We will, as our process, I think, has changed slightly, we will do our normal board presentation from staff. We'll do clarifying questions from the board, and then we'll open up to public comment again. And then final board discussion. And before we get to that, just one. Okay. Why don't we go ahead with board presentation, please?
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Board of Trustees, Superintendent Ochoa. It's May 11th. We're really excited about our board study session that we've been working on all year. Program Specialist Alexis O'Flaherty is going to join me presenting the LGBTQ plus inclusion task force findings. And we're excited about it. So thank you. As soon as she can present it, we'll get started. There we go. Thank you, Alexis. So in the Samhain Foster City School District, we educate, inspire, empower every student in every school, every day to live, lead, and learn with integrity and joy. I think it was important for us to start with that because to me, the word that pops out is every student, every day. And so I think that's the theme that runs through our presentation tonight is that we want to ensure that every student feels this way. So it's a real, really powerful cornerstone, not only of our district's work, but of this work in particular. So I wanted to, we wanted to start with that. The Rainbow Flag, also known as the Gay Pride Flag or simply Pride Flag, is a symbol of lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning pride and social movements. The colors reflect the diversity of the LGBTQ plus community and spectrum of human sexuality and gender. Designed by artist Gilbert Baker at the request of the San Francisco Supervisor and first openly gay elected official in the history of California, Harvey Milk, the original rainbow flag made its debut at the San Francisco Gay Freedom Day Parade in 1978. Very cool. This quote by Harvey Milk really resonates why we do this work. All young people, regardless of sexual orientation or identity, deserve a safe and supportive environment in which to achieve their full potential. Again, I want to highlight the word "all." I think that, again, is something that speaks to me and just speaks to, I think, the findings of our task force and the students that we represent. The district's strategic plan that the board adopted or approved on June 9th, 2022 addresses three goals: achievement, equity, and wellness. The work to ensure that our students who identify and who are questioning their LGBTQ plus identity was specifically set as a part of the wellness work, and a subcommittee was formed this school year to address that goal. Tonight's discussion will focus on that work and our findings. The LGBTQ plus Task Force, under the leadership of Student Services Program Specialist Alexis O'Flaherty, was formed in the fall of this school year and included representatives from, from certified and classified staff, administrators, middle school students, as well as parent representatives. The Task Force met six times throughout the school year to elevate this work for the board discussion this evening. This next slide shows the amazing team of dedicated Task Force members. I'd like to thank them all personally, and I think it's important to read out their names since they were so committed to this work and are here with us tonight, I hope. We have Douglas Garrus, he's principal in the district, Natalie Delahunt, an administrator, Cindy Chin, administrator, Chuck Perryman, counselor, Sophie Gomez, social worker, Lauren Alexander, counselor, Sven Swenson, school psychologist, Veronica Cabrio, community service specialist, Alexis O'Flaherty, our program specialist for Student Services, John Gallagher, a parent and a teacher in the district, Marcela McCollum, a parent. And then we had student representatives from both Abbott and Vowage. And I have to say, they really made the difference. I mean, they were so powerful. So I don't know if they're there tonight or here tonight, but my hat is off to both of you. So thank you for that. The Trevor Project is a nonprofit organization that provides 24/7 crisis support to LGBTQ young people and was born out of the response to end suicide among lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, and questioning young people. They are leading the way to help young people see a world where all LGBTQ young people see a bright future for themselves. The Trevor Project's goal is to make strides in advocacy, education, and crisis support for LGBTQ young people. It truly is a great resource for youth and families. As you can see on this slide, in 2022, they've highlighted some really strong mental health issues that the LGBTQ community has impacted by. Forty-five percent in this survey seriously considered attempting suicide during that year. Fourteen percent of that number had actually attempted suicide during that year. Seventy-three percent reported experiencing extreme symptoms of anxiety and almost sixty percent symptoms of depression. I want to point out that the Trevor Project is based in LA, but it's across the country. There is a place in San Francisco as well, the Trevor Project. Trevor was named after a young person who actually tried to commit suicide because he identified as LGBTQ. Alexis O'Flaherty will now share some data on how students who identify as LGBTQ plus or questioning perhaps are feeling about their experience as a young person in our district.
Thank you, Superintendent Hills. So for the first time this school year, Samhain Foster City School District Middle School students were asked to answer questions regarding safety, their perception, and harassment towards LGBTQIA+ student population through the California Healthy Kids Survey, also known as CHICS. Overall, 570 out of 1,107 sixth graders, 768 out of 1,116 seventh graders, and 767 out of 1,067 eighth graders participated in the gender identity and sexual orientation-based harassment module. We have, we had a total of 2,105 students out of 3,296 seventh and eighth graders participate in answering questions in this module, which means approximately 64 of our middle school students who are enrolled participated in the gender identity and sexual orientation-based harassment module. So 64% of our students, middle school students, participated. One theory for this low participation is that for sixth grade students, in order for sixth grade students to be able to participate in the survey, parents or guardians need to opt in for their child to participate. Meaning if a parent or guardian doesn't sign a permission form, then the student will not take the survey. For seventh and eighth grade, it's an opt-out permission form, meaning a parent or guardian would need to sign permission, meaning that to opt in, so that the seventh or eighth grader, so that means all seventh and eighth graders have the opportunity to take the survey unless their parent or guardian opts them out. Other theories for low participation include that not all middle school advisory classes participated in the survey or students themselves may have decided not to answer questions or sections of the survey. So at any time, a student can submit the survey, whether they've answered one question out of all of the modules or they've only maybe completed one module and said, you know what, I'm done completing it. So they may stop at any time and submit the survey. Our goal for next year is, is that we have 100% participation. And what we'll do is we will educate students, staff, parents, and guardians on the importance of students, students participating as we need to hear their voices and so that we can learn from them on how they're, what they need in order to thrive in school. So we are going to share a few of the questions and answers that our middle school students provided from the Healthy Kids Survey. When asked, when students were asked if they felt their school was safe for students who are lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, queer, or questioning, 24%, which translates to 137 students out of 576 graders disagreed or strongly disagreed with the statement that they felt their school was safe for students who identify LGBTQIA+. Thirty percent, which translates to 230 out of 768 seventh graders, disagree or strongly disagree with the statement they felt their school was safe for students who identify LGBTQIA+. And 29%, which translates to 222 out of 767 eighth graders, disagree or strongly disagree with the statement that they felt their school was safe for students who identify LGBTQIA+. The next question the CHICS survey asked was, during the past 12 months, how many times on school property were you harassed or bullied because you were lesbian, gay, bisexual, asexual, non-binary, transgender, or someone thought you were? Ninety-six percent, which translates to 547 out of 576 graders, responded that they were harassed or bullied one or a zero or one time while on school property during the last 12 months. Four percent, which translates to 22 out of 570 responded, they were harassed or bullied two or more times while on campus because they were gay, lesbian, gay, bisexual, asexual, non-binary, transgender, or someone thought they were. For the seventh graders, 94%, which translates to 721 out of 768 seventh graders responded that they were harassed or bullied while on school property zero or one time during the last 12 months. And 6%, which is 46 out of 768 students, responded they were harassed or bullied while on school property two or more times in the last 12 months because they were gay, lesbian, bisexual, asexual, non-binary, transgender, or someone thought they were. And finally, 95%, which translates out of, which translates to 729 out of 767 of our eighth graders responded that they were harassed or bullied one, zero, or one time while on school property in the last 12 months. And 5%, which translates to 38 out of 767 responded they were harassed or bullied while on school property two or more times in the last 12 months because they are LGBT, because they are LGBTQ plus or someone thought they were. Students were asked which adult, if any, on campus, they would tell if they were bullied. 171 out of 570 of our sixth graders, of our sixth graders responded that they disagree or strongly disagree that they would tell a site administrator if they were bullied. 360 out of 768 seventh graders responded that they disagreed or strongly disagreed that they would tell a site administrator if they were bullied. And 414 out of 767 of our eighth graders responded that they disagreed or strongly disagreed that they would tell a site administrator if they were bullied. The next question that CHICS survey asked was, if anyone, if any student was bullying me, I would tell one of our other teachers or other staff members. And 143 out of 570 of our sixth graders responded that they disagreed or strongly disagreed that they would tell a teacher or staff member if they were bullied. 278 out of 768 of our seventh graders responded they disagreed or strongly disagreed that they would tell a teacher or other staff member if they were bullied. And lastly, 330 out of 767 of our eighth graders responded that they disagreed or strongly disagreed that they would tell a teacher or staff member if they were bullied. So what do we do with this data? This year, I'm really excited because we were able to partner with Nikki Eddy Consulting, where Nikki has engaged our counselors and administrators in a multitude, multitude of opportunities, which led to a needs assessment survey as well as the start of the conversation regarding deconstructing inequitable practices and integrate new systems of support for LGBTQIA+ students and families. Nikki has been a classroom teacher. She's been a counselor, middle school counselor, and a GSA advisor in Title I schools for over 18 years. She's a two-time Teacher of the Year recipient, served on the ACLU Action Committee, worked with organizations to raise money for undocumented student scholarships and to fight for border justice. Lastly, Nikki has served on the Board of KFLAG, and it has been a true honor to work with her this year. We've worked together three times, and we've spoke many more times, and she is absolutely amazing, and I've learned a lot from her. So I know she's watching tonight, and she's here, so thank you, Nikki, for everything. And as I stated, we, Nikki, completed a needs assessment survey after talking to the four comprehensive middle school counselors. And the data is showing us that, so there are four, we have four of our comprehensive middle schools. So if we look at student self-referral process, three of our four comprehensive middle schools have a student self-referral process. So what does that mean? That means that a student can self-refer by going to the office. Sometimes there's a form, a written form that they fill out. Other schools will have a Google form that they fill out, and it gets sent to their counselor saying that they would like to self-refer. So three out of the four schools have that student self-referral process. For, all four of the comprehensive middle schools have this, have visible LGBTQ plus posters, whether it's in classrooms or in offices. And all four of our schools have LGBTQ plus clubs established. They look different at each school, some depending on how long they have been established. Some are really thriving and some are just starting. And so we're at different points with that. And it was reported, three out of four of our comprehensive middle schools are doing SCL lessons in the classroom. And then all four of our middle schools have care teams established. So a care team is where a group of adults come together to discuss any concerns that they have for students or how they can help families, what interventions can be tried. All four middle, comprehensive middle schools have those care teams. So who is on a care team? It's the site administrator, the counselor, the student support TOSA. Some of their, some of the care teams at sites include psychologists. Some of the school sites include a district social worker. So what are some of the next steps Nikki has suggested for Samhain Foster City School District? After consultation with the counselors and site administrators, Nikki suggested the following next steps for our staff and sites. So additional LGBTQ plus training for all staff. And topics she suggested for the professional development could possibly include how to provide an inclusive space for students, how to respond to hate speech, and training on restorative practices. Nikki also suggested accessible and integrated all-gender restrooms for students and staff. And Nikki also suggested hosting a district-wide GSA retreat so that the district, excuse me, so that the middle school GSA advisors know that we are a team. We're, we're going to do this together. And then even at the end, compile a GSA dance or something so all of our students can come together and support one another. Nikki also suggested tier-two group work led by counselors to address racism, transphobia, and homophobia at sites. And lastly, she suggested that middle schools could possibly host a peer mentor panel, meaning that some of ours, some of the students that are in the feeder high schools could come back to their middle schools to have conversations. And it would be more of a tier-three intervention, wouldn't it be like a whole school assembly? But really, for, it would be a tier-three intervention. So for students who may have been making some homophobic remarks, having students from a high school come back to the middle school and say, this happened to me, and this is how it affected me in middle school and how it's still affecting me in high school today. So students teaching students, we think, could be very empowering as well. So what work have we done in 2022, 2023? We have created the LGBTQ Task Force. Like we have already talked about, we have engaged with Nikki Eddy Consulting. We have established LGBTQ plus clubs in the middle school. And for this, we partnered with Outlet Adolescent Counseling Services for a professional development for LGBTQ plus club advisors. And I have been able to help go out to some sites and help when topics have come up as well. We started our LGBTQIA+ professional development with the Wellness Team this year. We have pride posters that can be displayed as a way of to show support for LGBTQ plus stakeholders. And our counselors have supported our LGBTQIA+ students as well. We have also hired an LGBTQ plus TOSA, Israel Cruz, who will start next school year. We're thrilled that Israel will be joining us in his new role. And he's currently a counselor at Laurel. So we're very excited that he'll, he'll be joining our, our team in that new role. So professional development. So we have welcomed human, the Human Rights Campaign welcoming schools. Just last year, we started with our Wellness Team. So the Human Rights Campaign's goal is to ensure that all LGBTQ plus people are treated as full, as full and equal citizens across the country and world. And they've been fighting for LGBTQ plus people and their rights for over 40 years. So we have, we have introduced welcoming schools to our Wellness Team last April, and we will continue with Wellness Team this coming summer. And the topic that the Wellness Team had was creating gender-inclusive schools. Our professional development for all certificated staff for TK through eight will continue this summer with our Summer PD Institute. And the two topics they will be covering are preventing bias-based bullying as well as creating LGBTQ plus inclusive schools. So we're very excited for that work coming up this summer. We are also beginning our restorative practice professional development. This will also be part of the Summer PD Institute for our middle school certificated staff. We will move into professional development for our elementary school staff this next winter and spring. In winter or spring, we will also continue restorative practices for middle school. So middle school starts their restorative practice PD and will continue through 2024, 2025. So we're very excited for that work as well. And we will also be working with Restorative Solutions who, with, for our restorative practice institute as well. Nikki Eddy will continue helping us with the work for our GSA advisors to ensure we have thriving clubs, and she will support our middle school counselors as needed. We're very excited for our professional development as well.
So as Alexis shared, so we've set some priorities as a task force to present to you, and I will just sort of highlight some of them. Certainly want to hear from, get some feedback on it. But as mentioned, we have a TOSA that's joined our team. Israel Cruz, as you mentioned, is currently a counselor, counselor at Laurel Elementary. He's very excited to join the team. And we want to make sure that our pride clubs are more robust, not only at the middle school level, but at all sites. Elementary is certainly an appropriate place for students to feel that there's a safe place for them to start to grow and explore who they really are. And so we want to recognize that. Pride clubs are very effective ways to support students. Family events. We recognize that it's a family system that supports students with LGBTQ plus issues and concerns and wellness, whether it's from the family end, as far as people at home that identify or young people in their family that are identifying this group. We want to open that up to the community and offer up some events throughout the school year. Picnic in the fall, place to come together and have questions and answers, just community affinity group, if you will, with, with families. And we're very excited about the opportunity to do that. The professional development that Alexis mentioned is certainly a part of this work that's going to be going on next year. And work with Nikki Eddy. Another big component that I think we found through research, definitely, is school libraries matter. We know we love books, but books that represent not just who we are culturally, you know, who we are as people, but who we are, who we identify as. So if we see books in our library, starting in kindergarten all the way through middle school, that speak to us in whatever way, it's important because many kids learn that acceptance or awareness through their books. So we want to do an audit of our libraries. We're going to put aside some money to support libraries to build their, their, their collection with LGBTQ appropriate titles at the grade levels where kids will have access to them. We want to look at our SCL, our social emotional learning curriculum. It certainly is a huge piece. I know Alexis shared that unfortunately, it's not as robust as we want it to be or as being used to fidelity as it needs to be. But that is a place for students to understand that, that there's a place for it to be held, just like math, just like science, just like anything else. Students need to understand how to be well with who they are regardless of how they identify. And of course, our website, making sure that it has the most updated resources on it for parents and community members. And as I mentioned, events for parents, including some educational events for parents. And then as we move to year three of our strategic plan, you know, it's very fluid. And then as we move to year three of our strategic plan, you know, it's a very fluid plan. I think next year's work will really dictate what goes out the third year out. But some of the things we talked about, the gender neutral, but we don't really want to call it gender neutral. We've learned that it's more all gender is the term to use for restrooms. Gender neutral implies that gender is a neutral thing and it's really not. So it's all gender restrooms in the district. Right now we are required to offer that to students, but we want to make sure that all students know and have access to them without it being weird, for lack of a better word. If we want to continue to look at our data, Alexis shared the California Health of Kids Survey results to you. We want to work, make sure that it's much more, used much more with fidelity at the school sites so that we get more feedback. We also have a district survey for middle school students. We could look at doing one at the elementary level about some of these topics. Continuing with professional development and as I said, the library audits and materials for students to support them. So those are just some of the things we've talked about. I certainly want to thank you for listening to us and this is our time to, to hear from you and have a discussion and answer questions. So thank you.
Thank you so much. And apologies to everyone for being a little bit late. So we will do some board clarifying questions and then we'll open up public comment again. And have some more discussion. So clarifying questions from folks.
A question. The CHICS survey, do you have access to data by school?
We do. Yes.
Is there, are there plans to sort of focus on any particular sites that might have this disproportionate, you know, just outliers from this data especially? I'm concerned that it's, you know, the, the percentage of, of kids who believe that it's safe drops the longer they're in middle school. And, and that, that is, and then also the number of kids who would tell grown up on campus. And so I definitely want to see some of those addressed to figure out like, like, why are we seeing those numbers? Why are they, why are they going trending negatively over time?
That's a really excellent point. I know Superintendent Choa has been in conversation with Student Services about our CHICS data this spring. We're looking at it, disaggregating it, understanding it deeply and wanting to go forward with next steps. But I think you bring up a really good point as the kids get older. I think that they also start to self identify in a way that is more transparent and they're more in tune with how they really feel about who they are. And of course, then it correlates with what we're unfortunately seeing about how they feel, who they can go to, how they can get support. And that's definitely work that the TOSA, Israel Cruz will, will help us with. So it's a great question.
Support questions. I have a question regarding the all gender restrooms. Are those being proposed to replace all the restrooms or just a, to add one that is all gender in each location?
Well, great question. We have not planned that yet. We don't have a plan for that yet as far as what the all gender restrooms will look like. We are required however, right now to provide all gender restrooms for students who for whatever reason want to have that as well as locker room choice. So by law, we need to do that in California, which is a really nice thing. But that, that brings up sort of the work for your next year to talk about that and look forward to getting input and feedback from the task force and the board on that. I know that's a big issue across the state of California and as new schools are being built, brand new builds are much easier, obviously. But yeah.
My concern is obviously boundaries and making sure that, you know, there's safety in place for all students. And not just, you know, I guess forcing it on all.
Right.
My question was, so I, I know you mentioned that you guys are, or there's an audit of school libraries. And I was just wondering if anyone's going to go through the curriculum to make sure that we are representing all types of people and families?
I will certainly check in with that services in their department to make sure that that is happening. But I know that is a conversation that's been ongoing.
I had a question about, and I know that I missed the first little bit. So you guys may have shared this, so apologies if I missed it. But I was just curious. So my understanding is that with the CHICS data, you can create some of your own questions. Are the questions here just like standard questions? Okay. So then I guess my follow up question is, you know, the Equity Task Force years ago, one of the, one of the strategy areas, I guess, that arose was, was LGBTQ plus, and that specifically arose from students. One output from that was a series of questions that we wanted to integrate on the CHICS survey. So I'm just curious like how much that's been integrated into our survey today, if at all?
I don't know the answer to that. I just know it's a module of the students. So I don't know if it's specific to your point that they gave input out of questions. So it's certainly something.
Can chime in here? One thing that, that will come of our Student Services Department, really spending a lot of time this summer on the CHICS data that we have is having a system wide design. Because right now there are schools that administer, I would, I should say almost all of our schools administer all the sections and all the modules of the CHICS survey that we put together. But it's not a hundred percent. And we really want to get good about having the same tools for all our elementaries and the same schools for all our, the same tools for all of our middle schools and for our K eights. I would want to be able to go back to 2018 CHICS data and bring that back as a follow up to the board to be able to show the difference in the kinds of questions we ask. I want to say, I lean towards saying we've added a number of really key questions that get at some of these questions. Uncovering the, the, the true feelings of kids and their safety when they identify as LGBTQ plus. But I would just want to be able to go back and get those, those older test questions. Cause we could, or those older CHICS questions, because we can actually do that.
You have clarifying questions?
I have a question about some of the professional development. I know that sometimes as kids are transitioning, you know, into a new identity or into new sort of aspects of their identity that, you know, it's not always safe for them to, you know, disclose to their family. And so I, I am curious whether the professional development includes information on how to handle these transitions and disclosures.
Yeah. May you thank you, our trust teacher, and thank you for bringing that up. A gender support plan is definitely, it's not written on here, but it was something that Alexis and I actually just talked about today. We did this prior to going to, we went to a conference last week in San Diego, Lead With Pride, a team of folks in the district. And as we're noticing, gender support plans have become an issue or a concern that there needs to be a plan in place. And the concern would be about making sure that people are trained to provide those plans. So to your question, yes, we want to provide training so that our social workers, our counselors, our administrators and others in this work can make sure that those plans are done appropriately and effectively.
Can I ask one more question? I just thought of this. So is, is this task force just student focused or are, are there supports for staff and employees that apply?
So we mainly focused on the students. We did talk about families and staff as well. And that's where we came up with, you know, the infinity groups for staff. And then we also talked about those family gatherings for family members. So we, the task force definitely talked about staff, student and families. I think we always geared towards the student part of it. But I think next year we can continue the conversation and keep opening up those doors for inclusion for all of our stakeholders. Thank you.
Okay. We will provide the public with an opportunity to make additional comments if there are any, starting with new public comment in the audience. Okay. For the physical audience. And then if we can take any public comment online, please.
Yes, thank you, President Watkins. Good evening. I'll be calling on speakers during public comment in random order. To our attendees, if you would like to speak, please use the raise hand feature on the Zoom meeting platform now. Attendees that have called in can dial star nine to raise their hand. And speakers will have three minutes to give their remarks. Once time has expired, we will move to the next speaker. Wait another moment. And we have two speakers at the moment, Eric Napralla. Let me, oh, I'm sorry. Let me, I lost my timer. Let me, give me a moment to get it back here. Okay. Eric Napralla, please go ahead.
Hi, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, good evening. I really appreciate the work you're doing. I think it's, a lot of things have changed since I went through school, you know, 20, 30 years ago. And I, I applaud the work you're doing. I do have a couple of questions and general comments. Hopefully you're taking questions and we'll respond. I, I looked through the agenda before the presentation and I saw my comments are around age appropriateness. You know, a lot of the, the surveys were completed with sixth, seventh and eighth graders, I believe. I, I wanted to ask, my, my son is a second grader at Fiesta Gardens. And I, I was curious, there were a couple, there were a comment or two about insertion of books into curriculum. And I, I wanted to generally understand what the policy was around education in grades lower than sixth grade. And I want to better understand what books and literature you plan on inserting into the libraries. Because I, I think, you know, recently there was, our son came home and made some comments about staff talking about, some comments about non-binary related to a Ken doll and king and queen of a jungle. And I think, you know, as a second grader, I think the general level of comprehension around the details of some of these, of the subject matter is it's a very challenging subject. And I, I kind of want to better understand what the plan is in your strategic plan to create. I don't know if you have a policy, maybe you could explain that or to include a policy in these lower grade levels. Because I question the appropriateness. You know, my, my belief is that the general understanding of, of acceptance in its entirety is a very important value to instill in these children, regardless of race, color, creed, religion, sexual orientation, how you identify. However, I, I just don't, you know, I'm, I'm not an educator. I don't understand necessarily what is and what isn't appropriate. I think at second grade, touching on some of these topics is, is more of a parent responsibility versus the, versus the school. And I, I kind of wanted to hear what the plan was to, to address this in early education on some of these matters at the lower grade levels. Cause you know, our son came home with a number of questions and I'm just not, I question the appropriateness at that grade level. The other question I had was about restrooms. And in boundaries, I'd like to hear a little bit more about how you ensure safety and security in those spaces. I know it's a, it's a challenging topic. We all went through school where a lot of this wasn't, wasn't front and center and probably addressed appropriately. And so I'm, I'm curious to hear more of the details around this plan and how to ensure the safety and security in these spaces. But primarily, I really want to understand, you know, at the lower levels, what the plan is to address those.
Thank you. No other speakers at this time, President Watkins.
Great, thank you so much. Opening it up for a board discussion.
Oh, I'll make a comment just addressing some of the comments that that parent gave. Thank you for making public comment. I would say that from my point of view, at least in terms of appropriateness of addressing these issues at the, at the school or district level, I think that that can be a joint responsibility. I don't really see the difference between these types of identities and other discussions of other identities and acceptance, like, like the categories you mentioned, right? I think even from a very young age, I think that children can understand that there are lots of different kinds of families. There are lots of different kinds of ways to identify, whether it's, whether, you know, you're a boy or a girl or in between or something else entirely. And I, I have friends whose children are transitioning at a, at a young age and they're very clear about how they feel about their bodies and how they're identifying. And I don't think that second grade is too early to be having those conversations. And I think that's, you know, I think for, for people who are not as familiar with the, the conversations or may not know people in those communities as, as much, maybe we can do a little bit of education around, you know, what are the ways that we talk about bodies and identities? And, you know, and just accepting and loving our friends as they, as they want to, you know, as they wish to be loved. And, you know, we can talk about how names are really powerful. You know, nicknames you might, I mean, even the concept of nicknames, right? It's not the name that you were born with, but it's maybe the name that you want to be called. People might change how, how they want to, to be called over time. A nickname may feel appropriate at one time. And then as they grow older, they may decide they, they don't like that anymore and want to go back to a name or a totally different name. So I think that these broad, these broad themes of, of acceptance of a whole person, I think that we can address those at a, at an age, at an age appropriate level for all ages from pre, pre K to eighth grade. And obviously those discussions will have more nuances as they get older. But I think that we can start from the basic premise that we love and accept all of our students just the way they are.
I do have a response to that. I do agree that accepting all students just as they are is definitely something that we all should do in this environment. But I do understand from the parent's perspective of age appropriate and certain topics being discussed at school versus at home. I do believe that we do have a responsibility to respect the wishes of some parents who wish to either opt out of certain educational opportunities that are offered that they feel would best be served at home versus at school. So maybe, you know, having an option, especially at a certain age level should be something we consider. But not to disregard, you know, what we want to ultimately implement and teach, but also having that option if a parent does not want to have a child apart there.
Add a couple separate follows. So I guess one is, I do think it would be valuable and it's potentially something that we could agendize for another time. If folks are interested, because I know that it's come up in a couple of different contexts that we're looking at libraries and books and curriculum selection. And, you know, that seems like potentially an area of interest for diving in deeper. And so depending on kind of how the rest of the board feels, if that's something that we want to agendize, that wouldn't just be in this context, but it would be right, like we that wouldn't just be in this context, but if it would be right, like we had a presentation at our last study session around the culture responsive teaching and learning and books in that context. And so potentially there's like a desire to dig into that a little bit more and learn a little bit more about what that looks like and what the vision is. So that's something that, you know, as Superintendent Ochoa and I can, can talk about if there, that's like thumbs up of interest for folks. Yeah. Okay. And then the other thing that it made me think of when I, and maybe I'm, one of the things is I was looking through kind of like the three year plan that I didn't see, but maybe missed it was like policy analysis. So one of the things that Equity Task Force spent a lot of time looking at were policies and the way in which equity showed up in those policies. I could see that being really important for this group, this task force sitting into is to look at various district policies and to see like, is what we're saying in these policies aligned with our values and our beliefs and in what ways is that showing up and in what ways are we recommending adjustments? I think it's a really important part across our task forces to be examining our district policies. And while like it's writing on a paper and it's like a, a small part of the puzzle, it does kind of set the tone. You know, when potentially all of us are not here anymore for like what we believe and we can always come back to the words on that page and, and determine how then we implement them. So I'd love for that to be added into kind of the next steps. The other pieces around, you know, as I mentioned, the Equity Task Force and, and there were many students at the time who were advocating for the focus, for this focus, particularly because of the experiences that they and their friends were having on our middle school campuses. Um, and so it was one of three strategy areas, like it was a really big deal. And so I would just, if we haven't gone into like the archives on that, there was a ton of work and effort that was put into making recommendations to the board, research, outreach, getting student perspective, making recommendations for chicks. Like there was a lot there. I'm sure that I have a folder. If you guys don't have that information, I'm happy to share it. We have like a folder and that was probably three years ago, four years ago at this point. But I think it's really prudent to just like dig through those archives and make sure that we're like synthesizing that information and taking the good learning from there and expanding on that. Um, as we think about additional recommendations, I also, there's a world in which like, you know, I heard the, maybe working with the high schools have like students, like there's a world in which like, there are two students in particular, I'm thinking about that were exceptionally active on the task force that are in our high school right now. That could be like really good liaisons to that work and have a context and history and are the reason why we focused on that at that time. So I think that it might be worth going, going back into the archives there. So I'll try to find that folder and give it to you guys if you have access to it.
I do want to do that. I'll, I'll find you.
Um, I just wanted to thank everyone on the task force. They will thank you both first of all for this presentation. Thank you for everyone on the task force that has put in, you know, the time and energy to come up with some of these recommendations and to dive deep. And I wanted to thank our teachers and counselors and administrators on, that are on campus that are dealing with this every day with making sure that our students all feel safe and welcome and included. I don't know, when I see survey data, I like to just kind of come up with some of my own reasons for why I think things are. And I'm wondering, you know, as you look at the data from going from sixth, seventh and eighth about bullying and who, who feels strongly that they would or would not talk to principals or teachers. It, it almost makes you think, if you're a sixth grader who's getting bullied and nothing changes. In seventh grade, you're less likely to go talk about it to somebody because nothing changed the first year. And even in eighth grade, even if the bullying continues, you're less likely to again talk to people. And so that, to me, that I thought, well, that could be a reason why the percentages of disagreeing go up from year to year. And it just makes me think that when you look at the Trevor Project data and around, you know, suicide and, and anxiety and depression. Like we can't just tell kids that it's going to get better. We have to actually do stuff and I know we are. And I want kids to know that this, this school district is a safe place for them. And so just thank you to everybody that's doing this work. When we talked about like the clubs and high schoolers, I almost wonder for a middle school student, you go into high school is just like an unknown, right? You don't know when you go there, what it's going to be like. And it might be nice to just, maybe some of these lunchtime and clubs could invite high scores. And they can say that when you go to a high school, we have these clubs or we have, you know, these, this is what the counselors are like. It just kind of help make students feel like the next step that it is going to get better. If it's not good right now, it will get better. But I don't know, even bringing adults and talking about their experience when they were kids and how it is now. It's, I think, gives people some hope, but yeah, thank you for everything. I know that this is, this is not easy work and schoolers can be rough and they're not always the kindest friends to people. And so appreciate everything.
So I'll, I'll follow up on the data first. I also like trusty projectors start thinking about why and, you know, coming up with my own thoughts and everything else. One of the things that I am curious about is when you look at the first question we deal about safety and, and it seems generally like, okay, you've got 24%, 30% and 29% think it's, it's not safe or, or strongly disagree that the school is safe. But then you go to the next question and you talk about bullying. And when you look at it, 95, 91, 91%, you know, in terms of zero times being bullied. I thought, well, wait, there's some sort of disconnect. But my next thought is, it's really not necessary, or what I would love to know is, it's not necessarily how many times you have been bullied. But what about how, if you witness someone else being bullied? Because some of these answers in terms of zero times might be those students who don't, don't identify themselves. And so that's why you have a higher percentage there. And so I would love to know, okay, well, have, is it you or have you witnessed? You know, and I get, get it. I don't know if this is the stock California state sort of question or whether there's a modification that we put in. But then it leads me to believe it's like, okay, if 24, 30 and 29% feel like it's unsafe, the majority feels like it's safe. And then you go to the next question and think, well, okay, it does seem like there's not that much bullying, but it may be, there's like another layer to that. And so I would love to know like whether or not, you know, some students are witnessing sort of the bullying of the other students. So. And then going on to the principal and, and teachers. It is a little disheartening, obviously, to, to see that as they get older, there's a little less trust there. I would say like our current eighth graders, they did start, I think, middle school sort of in pandemic. And so I'd be curious to see what the data looks like next year as we're all coming out of it. You know, I think that in comparison to when my son started sixth grade, we were just coming out of the pandemic and there's less of a connection that you felt with the school. There's definitely less, now things are coming back to the clubs, the activities, the, the parents on campus. There's a little bit more belonging. And so I'm curious to see, you know, how this changes in the future. I'm also not surprised that more students would actually talk to a teacher versus, or another staff member versus the principal. Because, you know, with the block schedule now that the students are with their teachers at least three times sort of a week. And so versus the principal, you don't necessarily see them, there's less of a connection there. I love our principals, administrators, but you know, they can't connect with every single person on a day-to-day basis versus when a teacher has that student for 80, 90 minutes a day or so, there's some real connection that they can, they make there. So I'm, I'm not sort of surprised at that, but there's obviously room for improvement there. Facilities wise, I have seen the all gender restroom at Burrell Middle School. And so I'm wondering whether or not is that anyone can go in anytime, is it single uses? Is there a lock? So if someone's in there, like you talk about the safety issues is, I, I, I never thought about that, you know, in terms of, you know, is it a, a one person, you know, stall or so that, that the person could lock it and feel safe for that. I know that all of our other restrooms, we all just recently put up cameras on the outside. So we'll know, you know, if something happens because, you know, there was, there was that tick tock challenge of, you know, damaging restrooms in our school. So I know we have that. So that improves safety, but I, I'm curious about, about those. Love to know what our plan is. And, and obviously if it's year three or year two, then I understand that. And that's fine. Lastly, I, I mean, well, not lastly, but you know, when we talk about sort of age appropriateness and, and books and everything else, my, my initial thought was, well, how are we doing this? And is there a difference somewhat like how we teach sex ed? You know, there's the fifth grade sort of, I would say curriculum. And then there's the seventh or eighth grade where it's just more detailed and everything. And so I'm wondering whether or not, I was initially thinking like that, but then I was like, no. The reality is, and, and to me where we want to get to is like this stuff is throughout, like on a daily basis sort of situation where we talk about it. And it's not necessarily a big deal. It's not a, something that, hey, we need to bring in special curriculum or something else. My son's friend, very back in kindergarten, had a really good friend who had two dads. And it was in kindergarten where we had to explain to him and said, yeah, some families are different and they have two dads and that's okay, you know? And so I think that at a young age, I mean, there's maybe not the full details of things, but you know, there's a way for us all to talk about it. And, and I do think there's a partnership between parents and the school district in terms of how we deal with it. Because what we don't want is to not talk about it where all of a sudden then there's some additional bullying later on where they feel it's okay. And so I, lastly, so that's my point just on that. I, I, I've seen, we were at schools where we did have some age appropriate books shown to us in elementary, which I thought were great. But I do think that these questions are coming up as young as kindergarten. And so the idea is, maybe it's not the full details, but it's, it's okay to talk about this, right? Cause last thing was, we don't want to talk about it and that's not that bad. So lastly, I just want to say, I want to thank everybody for this presentation and the task force. I think it's, I think it's well overdue for us to talk about this. Uh, and I, I look forward to hearing about it more in the future and seeing how it progresses. So thank you.
I wanted to follow up on that with two things. Yes, I echo the thanks. Sorry that I did start with that. Thank you to you guys for the presentation and to the committee for all of the time. I just, I'm, I am so heartened by all of the committees and all of the individuals in our community that are dedicating a lot of time and energy to continuing to make this district a stronger place and a more welcoming and inclusive place for all of our students. Just to, just to build on that, it's interesting, I think a little bit about, you know, the conversations that we've had around ethnic studies, culture responsive curriculum, right? Like by not including certain groups, like you are making a statement in another way about who is valued and who deserves to be shown in literature. And so I think, I, I just want to echo, you know, which, what you both shared. And I just feel like it's important for all of our students to see themselves and their families and their experiences reflected across our schools, across our curriculum every single day. Um, and until we're, and until we're doing that, you know, we're, we're not creating safe environments for our kids, for all of them. So I just think it's really important. And so I think we can again, talk a little bit more about like what exactly that looks like and the curriculum around that. And potentially that's a little bit more where some of the concerns potentially are coming up in terms of like how we leverage that in the conversations that we have. But do you think it's a really, really important? The other thing that I was just, I'm like now taking a trip down memory lane and I'm like, oh my gosh, thinking about like all the things that we, um, one of the other things that I was recalling and it was right before COVID, we were, we had some folks from the commission, just pulled it up. The the San Mateo County has an LGBTQ commission. I don't know how connected we are with them or not, or the San Mateo County Pride Center, but um, we had, I think it was a commissioner at the time either come to one of our task force meetings or I was sharing about the task force, like in a different context and was going to go and share a little bit about our work, but then COVID happened and it never happened. But I was just thinking, to the extent that we can like create partnerships with other, you know, organizations, especially local. Like when you look on their webpage, like one of the things that they're front and center is like gender neutral restrooms are vital for safety. So it seems like there's like potentially some, you know, work. So I just think like the more that we can do outreach. So I know, I was just looking at the list of commissioners, like know a couple of folks on that commission. So if there's any interest in like us being involved, so let me know. I'm sure that there are other people here that do as well. And yeah, I just think like the partnerships are, can be really invaluable and, and they just kind of strengthen our entire community and help to see that connected is really important for our kids and their families. So that was just another thing I was thinking about.
I just wanted to address one thing that trustee Chen said about like looking at this data and seeing that there's, you know, for the number of times that they were bullied, I want to point out that it says on school property, which leaves out the time that they're out of school, leaves out social media, right? Which there's a lot of interactions on social media that we are not able to monitor or know about. So that may be, you know, affecting this other data of feeling safe within the school.
Well, thank you. Can I just say one thing? I think one huge learning I had was I know we have a lot of educators in our community and adults that care for kids. And one simple thing they can do that the data has shown that lets people know or kids know that they're cared for is to say, tell me your name, what, what do you want to be called? I think maybe you mentioned that. And then what's your pronoun? And the data has shown that was it 65% of the kids that feel that the educator, that caring adult has asked them that has reduced their depression, anxiety, suicidal ideation by 65%. It shows the kids or the, the young people that they're working with, whether they're TK through eighth grade. What's your name? We all want to be asked what our name is and your preferred name and your preferred pronoun. And I think if we have that, just that as a first step of let's go for it across the board, we're going to make it. So I just wanted to, to share that.
And one of our students that were on the panels did the exact same thing, you know? I go in and the first week of school, if a teacher asks me, what is my, what is my preferred name and my personal, what are my personal pronouns? They know that they can go to that teacher if anything comes up. And so that was, it's something really simple that we can do that would promote that relationship building that we can do for our students.
And the other, the other last thing that I won't say anymore is the pin. You know, we also learned too that from kids and from this work we did last week in San Diego, I believe with pride conference. If kids see somebody wearing an adult, the posters are nice, but they don't, you know, teachers are here, put up your poster, put up your poster. They may or may not feel that that adult really believes in that word, but they're being, they're putting it up to do what the right, they think is the right thing. But a pin that is worn shows the student or the young person. This person is really an ally or someone that I can trust or someone I can at least approach. And a, a short story yesterday, I had the school office assistants and the administrative assistants in a meeting here. And one of the administrative assistants had a lanyard and on her thing, she had an ally pin. And I, you know, it just took me, it was, I was really aware of it and I wanted, and I spoke to her about it. And she really believed in the word behind that pin and what it means. And she's had kids come up to her because she's wearing that pin. So I just wanted to share that also.
She gets pins for everyone that works here so that they can.
Offer them up. You don't have to wear them, but if you wear one, meet it if you wear it. Don't wear it if you don't meet it.
And for students too, right?
Yes, students too. Thank you.
I know we're pretty, pretty early, right? This is it. Okay. I was just gonna, I know that I'm, I'm just gonna like give the public another option if there's any additional comments, just cause for six thirty-nine. So we just open up public comment.
Yes, President Watkins, there are currently four, but one has spoken already.
Uh, I think that's okay. We're doing another round of public comment. Yeah. So we can take them all. Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, uh, next speaker is RB Agabadalian. Please go ahead.
Hi, thank you. Good evening, everyone. And thank you for doing this work. Can you hear me?
Yes, sorry. Yes, sorry.
All right. Thank you. Um, I wanted to come back on some of the answer I heard to the initial public question. And a lot of it were based on what I heard at least was, I think, I feel giving, giving us an example of one of your friend's child that had issues. Uh, I'd like whatever decision we make to be based on science studies in fact, and not on personal thoughts and belief of isolated cases that we've seen, that really scares me. Cause we all have our thoughts and feelings. And if we're going to make decisions for our kids, I want those to be based on actual data and something more concrete that what you've seen personally and what you feel like. Um, I say also second that I do believe there's an age appropriateness to teach kids about these things. And I don't think it's fair to compare. I want all the kids to be included and love each other, no question about it. But I really don't think that it's fair to compare race, color, religion uh, to sexuality, especially when kids are in preschool, kindergarten or first grade. Uh, there's a reason why some of these classes are taught later in life is because we wait for kids to be mature enough to understand these things. Uh, my kids, my five-year-olds and eight-year-olds are confused enough as it is. And sure, telling them, you know, they also have two dads in their school and telling them, yeah, you know, they have two dads and that's it. That's different. That's one thing. But going into more details, I'm not ready to hand all that to school. I don't think there's anything that's been done yet. We don't have enough. We don't have enough background before all that to see how this impacts kids. And my other question is around the bathroom, um, the bathroom. Is it going to be individual or is it going to be group bathroom? And how do we, how is it making it safer? Anybody can enter this bathroom and do whatever they want. What data are we basing the fact that this is actually going to make it safer for everybody? Um, and you have all these data comparatively to compare the bullying question that we have. Have we compared that to general bullying? How do they compare? Are they more? Are they less? Kids get bullied for all kinds of reasons and no kid should be bullied. But those that are having, are they comparing to other studies around other reasons for being bullied? Like weight, um, race, religion, like all these other ones. I'm just curious to see if there have been any comparison in studies around that. And how do they compare? And what measure were taken for the other case that worked that could be applied here? Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker is Meredith McCauley.
Okay, please go ahead. Hi there. Hi there. Um, I, I, the last speaker, I, I'll get to my question. My question, I think is pretty simple. Um, but I feel like with the last speaker, um, I think there's a big difference between sexuality and sex. And I think that might be confused a little bit. Nobody wants, nobody's delving into people's sex lives. They're delving into the difference in people's, you know, people's lives, not, um, and also I, I think with the very first caller, I felt like I wanted, or the speaker, I wanted to say that there really is age appropriate all the way down. Literature for uh, for kids to read about, you know, the LGBTQ community and, and any life that's, you know, slightly different than the absolute cisgender heterosexual norm. Um, but my question actually was a little bit more specific um, in terms of what is being done with the, the schools that are K through eight? Because I'm hearing a lot from the, the, you know, traditional middle schools, but the K through eights, I'm not sure uh, how that's being addressed. Also, my child is at a K through eight. She's going into the sixth grade and the bathroom situation is um, pretty challenging as it is. And I'm wondering how that might be addressed as a, as um, all gender bathrooms. And that's it.
Thank you. Next speaker is Marcella Cardosa McCulloch. Please go ahead.
Thank you. Um, I want to again, thank uh, everyone at the district and the board and um, and the group that, that focused on this, the work, um, the comments of the board and the desire to recognize all of our students, staff and families and to truly see them. Um, I did actually hear in the presentation and the follow-up discussion, uh, some, I know there's much more of the data and the science that shows what our students need. From um, representation to safety in bathrooms and locker rooms. Um, one of the things that I hear outside of our district and uh, is kind of there's concern, I, I have a concern about using narratives that are existing outside, kind of in the zeitgeist versus actual data. Um, our own children telling us how they feel that is, those are data points. Those are, those are key data points. I think they're probably some of the most important data points that should guide uh, how we exist in this space. And I'm really happy that the district is sharing and inventorying uh, what our current practices are and how we can be more inclusive. I also think that uh, when it comes to concepts of gender and sexuality, uh, as was mentioned by the previous caller, there are amazing resources that exist that provide windows where people can kind of, that, that concept of windows, mirrors and sliding glass doors, the windows where people can see communities that are not necessarily the same as theirs and mirrors where people can see reflections of who they are or the spaces that they exhibit. I, I think that um, that creating those resources for our students, for our staff and for our families is only going to help some of the concerns, some of the safety issues that our students have identified. And I think the broader, the more inclusive we can be as a district, the better outcomes we will have as a whole. Uh, and I think that there is a lot of data that supports that. So, um, so I just wanted to say that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next speaker is Paul. Please go ahead. Sorry, please go ahead.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
So first of all, I'd like to thank you for the Open Community Forum. I think that for community cohesion, it is just so absolutely critical that everybody has a chance to have their say and be heard and be respected. My wife and I both grew up outside of the United States and we appreciate that we can have our views heard as well. I share some of the concerns that I heard today from a couple of the other parents. And I'd like all of the other parents out there who are listening and maybe aren't ready to speak up and who also have concerns to know that they're not alone. I'd like to encourage all of us to stay open-minded, but also at the same time to stay true to ourselves. And again, I'd like you to know, whatever your beliefs are, you are not alone and together we're strong. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, last speaker is Eric Napralla. Please go ahead.
Hi, good evening again. Sorry, just one last question. It's the final one. Again, I really appreciate the work you're doing. Um, I just, I wanted to make a clar, have, I have a clarifying question on my prior comments. If you could take a minute just to talk about just real briefly, how this subject matter is or is not included in policy or curriculum? I, there was, when I, when I posed my questions and comments earlier, it sounded like some of them uh, would be taken for further consideration and discussion. And I really appreciate that. Um, but if there is no policy or curriculum, can you speak a little bit about to what extent a teacher is allowed to have these conversations with students? And you know, if there's really, if there's nothing in writing or nothing developed, I'm fully supportive of identifying, you know, a curriculum and weaving this in. Um, you know, I believe in a hundred percent inclusivity. And you know, everybody needs to be accepted for who they are and, and what they do. Um, regardless of, of everything and, and be loved. But I also, I think there's, you know, I made some comments about age appropriateness and I feel very, very strongly about that. And if there is nothing that is developed as far as policy or curriculum, I think it's very important that parents and teachers work together to develop that. And so with that, thank you very much again for your time.
Thank you. Uh, one last speaker, raise their hand. Um, oops, one moment. Sven. Sven, please go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Dr. Swenson. I'm a lead psychologist for the district. I just wanted to point out that I'm in light of uh, parent concerns relative to opt-out and last speaker's uh, indication that more information regarding the type of curriculum, et cetera, that is being developed, that is largely the uh, the, what, the discretion of the district, but the California uh, Healthy Youth Act um, does indicate that yes, parents can opt out of any uh, you're right as parents is to um, opt out of any education having to do with uh, biology. Um, but that anything having to do with gender. And I mean, I can just read it, right? Um, so it, it's section 51932B of the California Healthy Youth Act. And it states that this chapter does not apply to instruction, materials, presentations or programming that discuss gender, gender identity, gender expression, sexual orientation, discrimination, harassment, bullying, intimidation, relationships or family, and do not discuss human reproductive organs and their functions. Um, I do recommend that folks looking for data-driven decision-making relative to uh, lawmaking and policy um, do reference the California um, Healthy Youth Act. There's a wealth of information there and might answer some of your other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, we'll wait one more moment. President Watkins, that was the last speaker.
Great, thank you. And thank you to all of the folks um, for commenting. Superintendent Ochoa, did you want to address any of the comments?
Thank you, President Watkins. Certainly want to be able to participate in the conversation. Um, I think when, when as a board, this group decided to hold sessions like today, I think we were, I think we were trying to create time and space for us to put big issues on the table. Um, look at the, the roster of topics that have been the subject of your board study session. Um, student discipline, early literacy instruction, culturally relevant curriculum and practices, and now LGBTQ inclusion among others. So I think we know this is a very important issue and this is likely to um, have our parents and our staff and our students engaged on a very personal and um, in a very deep level. So I just want to acknowledge that's kind of where we came at um, towards this work. But there is a great deal of law and there is a great deal of education code that specifies um, the requirements that districts in California have um, relative to LGBTQ inclusion, curriculum, instruction. Um, I really want to encourage the public to visit the California Department of Education website. That's C D E dot C A dot G O B. Um, there is a real wealth of information on that website. What you'll find there is uh, links and resources to both California education code as well as best practices, one of which was mentioned by Dennis and Alexis earlier this evening, that being the Trevor Project, but also very clear and um, informative links regarding health education to um, be able to tie into the comments that Dr. Swenson made just a couple of minutes ago about how to opt in or how to opt out of uh, certain types of um, topics. Um, but in addition to that, I think it's also important to um, when discussing things like the California Healthy Youth Act, also discuss um, the School Success and Opportunity Act, Assembly Bill 1266. This is a bill that requires that our students and all students in the state of California be permitted to participate in uh, sex segregated school programs, activities and use facilities consistent with their gender identity. Um, I am personally very proud to work in a state that has a law like Assembly Bill 1266, because I know it is a tremendous um, safe harbor for children um, throughout the state. Um, and like I said, on this state website, there's, there's a ton of resources. Um, I think members of the board have very um, you know, have really hit the nail on the head in terms of um, identifying some more work around our district policy, uh, referencing school libraries, but also um, some more discussion and work around our district facilities. Um, I really liked the comment on the, one of our parents made tonight about thinking about our K eight schools and really um, you know, making sure we, we get into those places and, and, and think about how some of these strategies will work there. Um, and at the same time, I feel like as uh, as a group of educators, all of us in this community, um, this is a really great way for us to um, go deeper into this conversation and, and my part in that process will be to strenuously advocate for children in this district and knowing how many children um, identify as LGBTQ plus and saying in terms of like my seat at the table, I will be advocating very strongly for children. Um, and, and doing it in a way that's collaborative and really devotes the amount of time um, that's needed for that. So Dennis and Alexis, um, there's more work to do, right? You talked about it in your, in your closing slides. Um, so that, that's the really great part is just knowing that we have the resources to do it and the folks to do it. Um, and now um, we've been able to surface some of these really important topics and um, we've got some, some, some part of a roadmap for, for the continued work with our public.
Superintendent Ochoa, um, just a, just a couple of things. And then if any of the rest of the board has comments, I think um, you know, this board for, I don't know how many years, many years, has been tackling a variety of different um, equity issues and really thinking about digging, becoming more and more data-driven and data-informed, becoming more and more student-centered and in our decision-making. Um, and you know, as I just think about each one of the conversations that we have that really asks us to look a little bit deeper at the data, to think a little bit more about student experience, to think a little bit more and prioritize students that we just haven't, right, historically done, which requires pivoting. Because in order to address a need amongst groups of students that we have historically underserved requires that you actually do something different and, and both from the policy level all the way down, you know, to what's happening in an individual classroom. Um, and then I just think about how much, you know, Superintendent Ochoa and the rest of the district staff have really prioritize making data-driven um, decisions across every layer of our system. And so you know, I, when I think about comments around, I mean, we can always be more data-driven. And I think like every one of us can sit here and say like, we can break this data down even more. We can do like Superintendent Ochoa aside from like 2018. So now we can look at, you know, we can mishmash and cross it in like every which way. And like, I know that's what you guys are going to do as a result of this conversation. And the next time that we come back together, like we're going to have more data. And the next time that we come back together, like we're going to have more data that we're going to be able to dig into and talk about. And like, this is not really about how each one of the individuals up here feels, right? Like we started this conversation talking about how our students feel and the data that's grounding the decision to have this conversation. And so I, I would just like push a little bit on those comments, you know, sometimes when like the data doesn't say what we want it to, or it doesn't lead to the decisions that we want, right? Like we can sometimes feel like we're not making a decision based on data. This conversation is driven by data around how our students feel. The fact that we had this conversation in this district four years ago came from our students and like Marcella said, how our students feel is data. And it was driven by two students who specifically joined a task force because their friends felt unsafe at school, their friends were anxious and depressed, they had issues with, you know, suicide, attempted suicide and, and everything that we heard about today. So I just think, I appreciate the diversity of perspective and opinion. I think it's important to open up the space. I agree. It's important for everyone to like share their opinion and perspective. And all of that is important information and data for us to hold as board members as we're thinking about making decisions. And to Superintendent Ochoa's point, like, our job is to make decisions that best support all of our students with a focus on students who have not had that in this district. And that is what this conversation is about. As so many of our other conversations have been about. And I know that there's like always this push and pull because if these, like, people are not having these conversations because they are not easy, right? And because it requires that you do things differently. And so, you know, these, this has been a bumpy road. It will continue to be a bumpy road. And it, there's going to continue to be, you know, pushback as we, as we continue to make changes. But I could not be more grateful for, you know, my fellow board members that are in, in this work and wanting to engage in these conversations for Superintendent Ochoa for leading the charge, for the two of you and everyone at our district, for the students that continue to fight for a better experience for them, for their peers, for the kids that come after them that continue to stay engaged in this work even after they leave our district. So I just kind of wanted to say those things. Yeah. Anybody else? One more thing, just hearing the term opt-out a couple of times. I think when we're, you know, do whatever you have to do in your own family in terms of what your parental rights are. But when we're talking about making sure that all students feel like they are welcome and that they matter and they're just like everyone else, when people opt-out, that's basically telling them this, you're different. We don't, we don't, like, our family doesn't agree with that. You know, it's like basically saying you are different. And so I think when, like I said, do what you have to do, but when we're really thinking about kids and wanting them to feel safe and welcome and included, it's best to opt-in and be part of the solution. And hopefully we'll see, we've got better, better place in the future. Okay, one more. I wasn't going to talk, but talk. No, that just made me think about, in the book, this conversation just made me think about, like, as many people know, I have a four-and-a-half-year-old and a two-and-a-half-year-old. And, you know, I think about like building their library at home. And like as we're thinking about book selection and like, you know, I think we're, I'm, I feel like fortunate, I guess, to be raising two young kids. Now we're like, I mean, I just feel like every year there's like all of this new, like incredible literature that's super intentional and thoughtful. And it's fascinating to me because I feel like I have like so intentionally curated like every single book that's on their shelf. And it's diverse in like every possible way you can think of. And like when I think about what my older child says about families and how surprised she is still about seeing certain family structures in books. It just, I mean, it just like goes to show like how important it is to have this diversity and experience and exposure because despite feeling like I've done like everything to make sure that she has this diverse experience and I can like count the number of books on her shelf that like don't show, it's still like so ingrained in so many places. And so I just feel like, I don't know, this is, this is an anecdote where I'm talking about my feelings and my kids, but I do think it's like an important, you know, I know, I, I know it's, it's like an anecdote, but like a metaphor isn't the right word. But, you know, as we think about what we're trying to build for our classrooms and our students and just like, how do we get to a place where kids are just reading? These are not surprises to them, right? Like they see themselves in everything that they're reading. It's not a surprise. They see themselves, they see their friends, they see their families, they see their community. And that like, that, that goes across the spectrum of like from sexuality and gender identity to race and ethnicity and everything else. So, yeah. I shouldn't have not, I should have, I should have left while I was ahead instead of making my comment. I felt like the first time. Now we're like declining that sophistication. All right, anybody else? You don't feel, no, no, no pressure to, to make comments. So we're good. Thank you guys again so much. Really appreciate everybody taking the time. Thank you to the community members who are in attendance, both in person and online. And to be continued. I will need a
Motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn. Okay, thank you, trustee Chin for the motion, trustee Proctor for the second. All those in favor say aye. We are adjourned at 7:06.